Came here in 1986 to run it for myself in October. I signed the papers when I was owner of the Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Find that balance between doing what you love, that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and more importantly, can resonate with people and actually to some extent, help people. That's pretty rewarding. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Are you thinking of buying, selling, or investing in real estate? But you don't know where to start? Have you searched for a Realtor who will be nearby when they are needed? Who will answer your calls and emails? Who will go the extra mile to ensure your every need is met? Who will help you with sourcing and supplying contractors while negotiating the best deal possible? Do you need a Realtor who does not believe in high-pressure sales tactics or other gimmicks? Then you need me. My name is Steve Roy, and I offer a full-service professional sales and customized marketing package for my clients. I am helping clients with buying, selling, and investing. I will build a custom plan to fit your needs. I will work closely with you to ensure that you achieve your goals. My services include not only an analysis of your local market and correct pricing, but I will also help you to prepare your home for sale and make it look as desirable as possible to buyers by providing expert advice, using professional quality photographs, and compelling descriptions. Let me help you minimize cost and maximize your profits. Call me today, 207-649-8522.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everyone for coming out this evening. Braving the cold. Our first order of business is public announcements. The 2018 dog licensing tags are now available at the town office. Current 2017 dog licenses expire on December 31st. And number two, nonessential town services will be closed on January 1st in observance of New Year's. Our second order of business is public hearings. To hear from the public on proposed revisions to the fire protection and prevention ordinance. Is public hearing open? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed. Our third order of business is public comments. Members of the public may speak to the council on any item or reserve the right to speak on a specific item that is on the meeting agenda when the meeting is addressed. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak at this time or reserve the right? He may be called on. All right, moving right along, our fourth order of business, reports from staff and committees, town managers' report.
So first of all, I want to make sure all of you are aware that one of our fire trucks was involved with an accident at the intersection yesterday. There has been some reaching out to the press all day today and the fact that our fire truck was completely totaled. And just so everybody is aware, that is not true. It has actually just folded in the front bumper a little bit. The truck is currently out of commission because we're waiting on the insurance adjuster. As soon as he comes, we'll have it repaired and get the parts ordered. It'll be back in service just as soon as we can, just so everyone is aware of that. We've had some additional breakdowns with some plow trucks, which we'll discuss later on. But just so you know, it's caused some delays in some of their plowing and having us using one tons instead of regular large pieces of equipment, so going forward with that. Our economic development project up on Escolin Drive is continuing to go forward with a closing scheduled for tomorrow. So you will see on the warrant this evening, a very large check that has been written to pay off our bond. Should the payment come into us, we will be sending payment on the bond tomorrow. And all of that has in place for the discharge of the mortgage and everything else. So that's all still going forward. Other than that, everything else that we've worked on in this very short amount of time since your last meeting with the holidays all in there, we're going to be discussing as we go through the rest of the agenda. That's it for me. And none of our committees have met since your last meeting.
We have no committee reports. Our fifth order of business is to waive the reading of them and accept the minutes as printed or amended for meeting number 23-17, held on December 13th, 2017.
So moved.
Motion in the second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Our sixth order of business, treasurer's warrant. To approve the treasurer's warrant number 37 in the amount of $897,140.78.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in...
I was just going to say that money is coming from...
Over 700, just over 700,000 of that is for the bond payoff.
For the bond payoff, yes. Any other questions, comments, concerns, you know, kind of thing? All right, all those in favor? Motion carries. Our seventh order of business, take action on the following items of business. Ordered that the town council hereby adopts the fire protection and prevention ordinance as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, is there any further discussion on this?
No, it's all good stuff.
Just want to mention one thing. Since your last meeting, when it came to the fees, they were all adjusted to a two-hour minimum instead of a one-hour minimum. In considering, comparing ours to the fee structure that's in the town of Skowhekin, where they have a four-hour minimum, we opted to go with a two. And then there's supposed to be another meeting of local chiefs, or chiefs from the region, so that they're going to be discussing what various fire departments do charge for fees. And the goal is to create an equal playing field for all departments and for them to try to work through that. But because your fees are a, they're going to be part of your normal fee structure of all the town fees, it won't require a public hearing for us to adjust them. And the entire fee structure will be coming back to you by the end of January anyway for all of our services for you to re-adopt and review.
Excellent. Anything else? No? All those in favor? Carries. Item 17-112. Ordered that the town council hereby authorizing the town manager to sign the Municipal Review Committee Incorporated Municipal Withdrawal Agreement, discontinuing the town's Equity Charter membership status. This was with perk, I believe.
This is with the MRC.
Oh, the MRC.
Yeah. You did the perk one when you did the put option a month ago. This is with the MRC.
MRC, okay. Is there any questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Discussed it, I think, a great way.
It's also been reviewed by legal because all three towns, Waterville, Winslow, and Fairfield are all opting for the same agreement. So Bill Lee has reviewed this document on our behalf, and everything's fine. It originally had come out a while ago, and some other municipalities had some concerns. It was playing with some of the fees and how they were doing their capital accounts. And what the adjustment was that was made is that there were going to be some pieces that were pulled out for the fiber right facility before they calculated their payouts. And those monies have been put back into the equation, so.
Excellent.
Is there a motion?
Move to...
I have a motion...
Second.
In a second?
So I'm glad that we are finally getting the government out of the expensive business of subsidizing something that other people know how to do better.
Yes, people that know trash handle trash. All right, any other, anything else? Something, nothing? All those in favor? Okay, item 17... Dash, I'm going to go with 113 on this one?
Probably a good idea.
Yeah. We'll call it 113 for the sake of argument.
I'll fix that.
Okay. Ordered that the town council hereby authorize the town manager to expend funds from the library building fund account up to the amount of $5,630 to repair internal water damage sustained by the roof leak that was several years ago.
Last year repaired.
Last year.
So moved.
I have a motion in the second, is there any discussion?
I just had one question, which is the quote from the contractor is for the amount of $4,680, so...
With the additional $950 that you see down below for painting.
Okay. All right, there.
That's why.
That was the drywall.
Yeah, so the $4,680 is to repair all of the drywall damage. And then they're going to paint afterwards.
Painting, okay. So, anything else? All right, all those in favor? And that brings us to the eighth order of business, council workshop and other business. All right, looks like we're going to discuss our annual organizational meeting. Well, this is going to be our second Wednesday of January.
That's correct. And what we've given you is all of the various boards and committees, which consumes a lot of your business at that meeting and folks who have been checked in with as to whether or not they want to continue to serve or don't want to continue to serve. And then also various applications that you received for folks who are interested in various different positions. And so, and with the change, the charter changed a little bit of how you'll do things too. It used to be that you appointed almost absolutely everybody. You'll do boards and committees, which you're required to do by statute and by charter. And then you'll have a list of the town manager's appointments that you'll confirm, which is all the rest of the staff members, as opposed to you individually appointing all of those. So that piece will be done. So that's kind of what's there for that. And then if you need any additional information from these folks, some of these folks have served for a very long time and gratefully have requested to continue to serve, which is good, to allow for continuation on some of these boards and committees.
I would make one notation. So the budget committee also related to the charter is reduced by one position. And so we had four people that were willing to be reappointed and two additional new applications. But of course, tradition of council has often been to honor folks that are currently serving, but it's at the pleasure of the council. But I would want to explain the reason why I had Mr. Slaney in under the new applicant column and leave a notation, he's current, because there wasn't a seat available for every single...
So the ones that are listed there are just listed in health of medical order?
Yeah, four to three. So I just slid him over so you could see that he's still interested. He indicated that if there are other people willing to serve and he's not needed, that he is okay with that as well. The other three folks that are listed said that they wanted to continue to serve with no extra notes.
It looks to me from this list that if Mr. Slaney is not unwilling to have his term end, then everybody who is, wants some sort of seat at the table can get one, depending on how we make the appointments. And I think it's always best to get as many people as possible.
Well, you're limited to three, and you have six people.
Well, I understand for the budget committee, but I was saying overall, I actually think that given what people have applied for and the number of applicants, other than Mr. Slaney, who you've indicated is okay with not being reappointed, everybody who's filled out an application could be involved in some way.
Yeah, we have, we have an application for every slot at this point. I did have to go out to look for folks willing to serve on the voter registration board of appeals. It never meets, but it's required by statute, so we had to fill that. But we do actually have enough interested folks for the positions that are available, which is often a difficulty finding folks.
One that we will be looking for from the council will be the second general assembly member for KVCOG. That's typically an elected official. It doesn't usually require a counselor to go, but it does require a counselor to be in the position.
Should be able to do this without too much trouble? You think? Do you have reservations on something?
No. Is the land use board of appeals position that's open an alternate or a regular member?
So we actually have a regular member who didn't want to be reappointed, and we always offer it up as the alternate for the folks that have been all those years serving. So it does fall open. So it was actually a person, Joyce didn't want to continue, she was a regular member. So we offer up the alt, the alt becomes the new regular member. And then we offer up the remainder of a term or whatever the term is. And I'll make sure that when we do the organizational agenda, that the action items are clear. We may have to add in a line to explain that. I'm already working on that.
Yeah, because the new applicant that you have is for both land use board of appeals and planning board. And remember, they can't serve on both of those, it's either or.
Yeah, and Kevin still wants to serve on the regular planning board. And he is the current chair. And the feedback I got was that the planning board is quite pleased with him. To give you, just to give you the feedback that I received. And he's pleased with serving. He actually expressed that this is something he takes great pride in and he feels that it's a good committee that's functioning properly. That was what he's saying.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Nothing? Okay, well then, let's see. Goals and standards.
See, you received a copy of last year's goals. And this is one of those things too where you do have, you'll be a new group when you come back at your very next meeting. It may be something that you either want to continue to discuss and maybe not necessarily set at your first meeting, but it definitely gets you started at looking at those and gets everybody all set. Because our new incoming counselor has also received these, so you'll be prepared to have that conversation.
And that was actually a question that I had, is do we want this as an action item? It normally would be for that particular meeting, not the organizational, but the first business meeting. But because we have new council and we're now having two meetings, I can put it to the second meeting, which is everybody's pleasure.
Second meeting, so that, yeah, we have a chance to discuss it. But on the second, yeah, second meeting.
Thank you very much.
This is relatively fluid anyways.
It is, it's...
Is there anything we can cast in stone?
No.
Okay, so, a little bit of homework. Photo pond up for appointed and elected public officials. I think we came to this to pieces last year, didn't we?
Pretty much.
Pretty much, yeah.
I think that it's the best compromise between being effective and being overbroad or overreaching that we can come up with. And I would not, I would not encourage us to revisit that debate.
Yes, I would concur with that. That was a lengthy debate that was, it was well hammered out. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of good information in here that, you know, do's and don'ts and how to handle yourself. And I don't think that needs to be...
I have a question. Michelle, was this the one that you wanted to see if you wanted to have us swear that we can do this annually as opposed to at the...
Oh, yeah, so we don't revisit, we don't have every sitting counselor revisit this. It's only given to our new members. And was wondering whether or not it was something we actually wanted to send annually to every appointed and elected official? Just because it's always good to recap and have folks review it and sign it and bring us back another copy, that sort of stuff. As opposed to, so when you have folks who have, you know, two or three-year terms in a position, they've gotten this, they get it if we adjusted it all to sign, and then they don't ever see it again. And it's never been our past practice to send it to people annually to have it reviewed and signed off on again. And I almost think it might be a good practice for us, similar to like, you know, annually you have to sign off on the fact that you've looked at the right-to-know provisions. Just because it's always good to have a refresher, they're just good things for us. And I think that it might be a good piece for us to do with all of our boards and committees, that kind of stuff for codes of conduct and incidentally.
I don't see anything wrong with that, a refresher. You know, a refresher course once in a while isn't necessarily a bad thing.
Well, I was going to say what we'd have to do, I think, at that end is then take this right here and amend it. With an amendment that, you know, says it should, you know, done annually. I guess, from my perspective, going back to our debate on this originally, is that for appointed, appointed officials, they serve, you know, at the discretion of the council and counselors serve at the discretion of the electorate, that this is, this is a good faith measure. It's not in and of itself a legal binding thing. This is what we want them to do. I think rather than mail it out and, you know, have to spend time to keep track of paperwork, I'd be okay if every board or committee member's got this emailed to them. That way they're reminded of it, but we're not spending a lot of time and office money chasing that around when, in the long run, I don't think that we have a huge problem with misconduct in office. And if we did, we would deal with that pretty quickly. But they would still be getting that reminder without having to, having to commit money to something that we can't ultimately enforce.
So no signature, just a reminder is what you're suggesting?
I mean, they sign it when they get their, their original packet, so they're recognizing that they saw it. They don't change it, I just think that getting a reminder is probably sufficient. Then how do you, how do you ensure that somebody has actually opened the attachment to an email and looked at it? We don't, but if they come back and say, well, I didn't know what was expected of me, we have something that they signed and evidence that we emailed it to them. And if somebody is being that negligent in their public duties, it probably...
Well, that's a good segue into the email. I am your keeper of retention documents. We have certain things that by statute have to be retained for a certain period of time, including email. Whether it's responded to or not, I have a sent folder, I have a folder, I put certain things. I have subcategories and something like this. I can actually say, you know, I requested a red receipt. I don't do it for every email, but I could specifically do that. Or just keep the sent email that I sent it to everybody and the contents that we have in our spreadsheet for boards and committees.
I would just say that, you know, in terms of public information, we've, in the past, been, we've had to be careful about sending out, you know, flyers to remind people of town meetings, because it wasn't budgeted for and it gets expensive to mail and track things down. And I just think that if we're not able to do it for things like, you know, town meeting agenda and whatnot, I trust that our board and committee members are being diligent enough to at least look at their email when they get something from the town. And if they're not, that's a problem and we'll have to address that they're not being diligent enough to receive communications, which I actually think is one of the things in the code of conduct. But if we are going to start, you know, a mass mailing program, I'd actually like to see that that go to information that's more for the public benefit than... I would sooner think that a workaround for that could be that it, that it would be the board chair's responsibility to actually collect those signatures and turn them in at that point. Because at least then you still have some sort of a physical... But this is something everyone, everyone does sign when they get their initial appointment. At once, which opened, which was the opening discussion in this, or the opening statement of this discussion. You sign it when you get it, when you start. And then what?
Well, then at the organizational meeting, it probably should be just an action item to bring up that everyone remembers, you have read this.
Yeah, so you get it...
If you do not have a copy of it, one can be provided for you for a refresher.
So it's for the term, Jeff, to answer your question. So if it's a three-year term or a five-year term, you've received it once. When they swear their oath in my office, they sign, this is on the backside, so they sign the front and the back, and they get a copy of both sides. The email is so easy, but we do have, you know, this 90-plus that we have to send that out to for the people that are currently not up.
I think that's fine. I think it could easily, I think we could do it with a combination of things. One, you could, you could easily email it to everyone. But also in a separate email, I could easily email the chairs of all of those groups and just say, you know, look, just as a heads-up reminder, this has gone out to everyone. Could you just please check in with your, your members and make sure they know that they've seen it, reviewed it, that sort of piece? We oftentimes will have folks who, no matter how hard we try to email people ahead of time, say bring your own copies to meetings, they don't, they don't have printers, they don't have that. So I like the idea of not chasing paperwork. But I think our chairs of all of our groups are committed enough to their position to follow up and make sure folks have reviewed what's come to them, and they'll just do a general check-in, that's all. I think we could do it very simply without having to chase copies.
I also think when we drafted this, we did it in a way so that it's not overly technical. It's, it's pretty common sense sort of stuff. And I think that most people, it's not, it doesn't get updated on a regular basis. I think most people, once they've read it and understand the broad strokes of, you know, integrity, responsibility, impartiality, and compliance, don't necessarily, I don't think we necessarily need to reaffirm that they, that they've specifically read it by having them sign it, but we, by making it available, we keep it at the forefront of their mind. I just think that, I know, like, just the nomination and appointment... Uh, I just think that, that, I know, like, just the, the nomination and, uh, and appointment paperwork, it takes a really long time to track everyone down and get it all signed. And having additional paperwork beyond that is just gonna add to that, that burden. But we can make sure that people have that resource. And if somebody does screw up, then we can say, here's where we sent it to you. You, you have no excuse for not reading it.
Well, you can send it out and then you put the illness on the chair and make sure that they've asked everyone, have you reviewed it?
I think that, that the follow up is, you know, that, that way you, you know that you're not sending it out and it's a futile attempt.
Why isn't the short timer had come up with additional stuff for the chair to do? Just doesn't seem right.
Here for you, Mike.
No one council is beholden to another, isn't that what it was?
Nearly a suggestion, that's all.
It's a good suggestion, actually.
Discussing planning board marijuana regulation update.
Excuse me. You didn't go over the memo on the new council checklist.
We did what?
The new council checklist, which was part of that last item for organizational. Michelle, I wondered if that's something that you might want to have reviewed annually as well too? Especially the records distribution and retention communications. It's another good reminder list and one of the concerns that has come up is the, um, texts and, um, social media communications are not recommended by M and A. And I have no way to file those or record those for you, so they, they're not considered official and it's not the proper way to conduct, you know, official town business. Michelle and I should be copied on all the emails. Unless it's a confidential item that I'm not privy to. Because we do keep that records retention through our electronic email. And we don't go chasing or digging into the, your town emails. We have the ability to, but neither, neither one of us has that kind of time. We just anticipate you're gonna forward or copy us on anything that comes from the community. And then I would keep it under the appropriate records retention schedule depending what the topic is. Some talk it, topics trump other ones on retention. We didn't know if that's something that we could add to the annual organizational business of, or reminder, a reminder email or something of that course.
You know, I, I think we could add that to the, the Freedom of Information Act sign off sheet as just a caveat. It, it seems fitting that it follows that and they have to do that annually, so. I, I think it should just be added to that.
I can easily incorporate that.
Yeah, it looks like that's where it would belong.
That's where it would belong.
Now we're moving on to the planning board marijuana regulation update.
So it was a year, more than a year ago that the planning board, you, that the council directed the planning board to start working on our land use ordinance with what changes that needed to be made in order to allow for retail marijuana businesses. Because of various different state laws not going into effect and changes and regulations, they haven't come up with anything concrete other than, um, at this point, they are not in favor of allowing social clubs based upon their reviews of various different pieces. They are suggesting that if we allow these types of businesses, that it'd only be in four of Fairfield's land use ordinance districts, which would be the village district, the commercials, industrial and rural. So not anything that's within residential or, or anything like that. Rural, if you look at our map, the RU district is basically the white that's on there. You're gonna find the village, of course, is anything that's downtown and commercial and industrial, I think, are, they're orange and yellow.
Orange and yellow.
Yeah. So. Basically areas that already have businesses anyway. Um, and I think a little bit of the, the green, uh, pale green is village. I can't see that from this far.
The center, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, that's where they're at. Of course, we're still waiting on where state law's finally gonna come down on all of this, but they did want to at least get back to, like, you know, where they are and just to kind of do a check in as to whether or not you think they're kind of still on the right path or whether you think their direction needs to be changed drastically. So I think that's kind of where they were at and, um, they've, they've done a bit of, they, of course, if you remember, it wasn't that long ago that our land use ordinance was just completely re-amended. And marijuana was something that they did a lot of research on at that time, um, already. And then with the law change, so it was very easy for them to incorporate all of this. But they continue to have been watching closely to the law, so just wanted to let you know.
No, I think they're on the right track and just hasn't seen anything. We're not gonna really know a whole lot until we get back into session next week and start it to that level. Whatever is done is gonna have to be done before February first because at that point in time, if nothing is done, it automatically goes into law, so. But we really haven't heard anything that's come back to us yet.
And, and for council not to forget too, um, if nothing is done and it does go into law, we're not prepared yet, you did not do a moratorium and have not done a moratorium on this yet. So that is still an option for you while we continue to work through the pieces with the planning board if need be, um, just so you're aware. Because it's not something that we've done. Excuse me.
In specific options, um, that's D three, is that where you're making the reference to?
D three would be where the adult use marijuana, social clubs are prohibited. Social clubs are where you're allowed to go in and.
But I mean, that would be, that would fall under, if we wanna make amendment to that, that it would fall under the, the white or the, uh,
The whole thing.
No, what they're saying is, is, so there's two different types. There's just the regular retail and then there's the social clubs. They don't wanna have social clubs at all, which don't allow people to gather and, and partake. What they are suggesting though is that the retail businesses themselves that sell would be in these three districts. Four, four districts, I'm sorry. And also comes with the, the other recommendations in here, there's a, it's a substantial application fee.
Yes.
Substantial app, I can't remember. Where it was, oh, it's on the application itself, I think.
It's a good jump to change.
Yeah. Seventy-five hundred dollars.
Given, given, has there been any discussion about how that's gonna be paid? Cause the majority of these businesses do not have bank, don't have bank accounts and everything that they do is in cash. But given that the FDIC, that marijuana is not legal federally, the banks cannot accept cash because it's not federally insured through the FDIC. Federal credit unions can?
No.
No.
Well, we, we, we can accept cash.
Well, just remember that on, once you reach a certain threshold and anytime you make a deposit, then, uh, on a particular day, then you have to fill out the, uh, paperwork declaring where that money has come from.
Yeah, but it's substantial.
Much more, it's ten thousand dollars. And that's a seventy-five hundred dollar fee that's listed here. You get two in one day and now you've got fifteen thousand dollars going to the bank requiring some, one of the, the town employees to offer up their, their social security number to make a, a deposit to the, for the town.
We don't do that as a municipality.
I was gonna say, yeah, I don't.
We deposit.
It's a different, different.
Much more than that in a daily basis and we don't have to declare where it comes from.
It's on an individual basis. Then you have to file a SAR, which is a suspicious.
Activity report, is that what that stands for, suspicious activity report? We do not as a business, as a municipality, do not. We, I've deposited over a hundred thousand dollars in cash before, you don't have to fill anything out.
Okay, in cash.
Cash, cash. Cash.
Cause that, that's, that is a, that is a.
That's not typical, we don't typically carry that.
No, no, well, no, 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 no. It's, it's, I just wanted to ask the question, cause it's, it's, it's a, a challenge.
It's not something that we have to do.
It's actually business, so I have to be one day.
Now, is that, uh, seventy-five hundred, is that coming through?
I, I don't know, I actually, I have not asked a lot of questions as to where that number came from.
Is it arbitrary or is it researched?
And that I don't know, but I can certainly find out.
Yeah, I'd like to. If it's standard and customary, I mean, that's fine. But if it's a number just grasped out of thin air, I'd like to know what they're.
Where it came from.
Yeah, where did it come from?
It's just, it is arbitrary, it seems arbitrary.
Maybe it's not, maybe that's a, maybe this.
That might be what folks are looking to charge.
Exactly.
Knowing that that will stay local. It will go to offset expenses with police departments.
Uh, maybe it is standard and customary around the state, maybe they did check on it. And if they did, it's, you know, great, glad they did the research on it.
So, but I will check on that.
I would be curious. The two thousand five public, public works plow truck.
So as you can see by the email that I provided you with this evening, um, it, last week, week before? Last week? Week before now. Our two thousand five plow truck, which was scheduled to be replaced in next year's capital reserve cycle anyway, it's engine blue. And it's either, we did some research, well, public works director did a lot of research, came back with roughly at minimum nine, ten thousand dollars for a rebuilt engine that came with a ninety day warranty, um, to put in a truck that really wasn't worth anything anyway. Or a twenty-five thousand dollar engine that did come with a warranty, but for a truck that we were just looking to get rid of because it's mostly, its frame and body is also shot. So having a brief discussion with the chair last week, we decided to start really looking at whether or not we could find and replace the truck with a new one and do it early. So what you have before you in this email are two options that have been found and, and Bruce is here tonight to answer any questions that you have. There is one truck that's currently at, uh, HP Fairfield in Skowhegan. However, it won't be ready until roughly March, it's not together, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Or you could go with one at Morrison Sylvester out of Auburn, which just needs to have a plow added to it. The truck being one eighty, a hundred and eighty-three thousand and the plow being roughly seven thousand, so that puts you at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The truck, the difference between the two, the, the truck that's at HP is much lighter on the horsepower with the truck. And the one at Morrison Sylvester has, is heavier horsepower, higher horsepower and a much heavier duty transmission. Um, it's the better of the two trucks actually. And it also would be more readily available quicker. On the backside of that email, I also provided you with our current balances for capital reserve for equipment. So our current capital equipment reserve is a hundred and ninety thousand, six fourteen. There's a public works reserve of fifty thousand. And then currently within this year's budget appropriations, there's another hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. So it gives you a grand total of three hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred almost to use. Knowing that next year's capital reserve appropriations that would have gone towards the truck would just go towards replenishing the account. Um, and we would not just, we wouldn't purchase another truck come July. This would be our purchase for right now. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we did have another truck that went down, so that we're currently without, that we're waiting on parts, which is a twenty-three hundred dollar repair, twenty-five hundred dollar repair. So we're two trucks down at the moment, so that's where we're at.
Yeah, I think the, I mean, to me it's crazy to wait till March. And, you know, you've got the extra cost too, because I don't expect that road grader is real cheap to run. Cause it's what we're using now.
We did put, what did we put back on the road?
We put the voter back on that route, shifted the truck that we purchased for the in-town route to go to the country route.
Right. So you're talking.
The MAC was on and then we had another breakdown over the Christmas Day storm. We had to pull the truck that moved to the center back in town and plowed dirt road to the one ton, which was not very effective at all.
Right.
So we're, we're kind of struggling right now and very nervous about coming soon.
Yeah, we've, you know, what's going on in the way this winter's been, I personally think that we need to go to the, uh, the one that's currently ready and that, is that a, is that a per, a set rate or is that a negotiable amount?
In my opinion, a negotiable, I didn't really pressure anything with these departments until, with these dealerships until we had to go ahead and do something.
So the roughly eight thousand dollars difference, um, between the two being the heavy duty, a little more horsepower, a little heavier transmission, is it?
The transmission is the huge expense difference.
Okay.
And, uh, this truck actually is already set up with a tarp system over the body, not something that we typically get and a couple of different hydraulic features that we usually do not get. They're good features, but just something we don't usually get and wasn't in that price from HP Fairfield.
Okay.
The reason for the truck not having a plow with it is because there's so many variations in different public works municipalities use different plows that they just didn't supply a plow with that truck.
Right, right. Are they both internationals?
One is a western style, one is an international. The international is the one that is already.
It's ready, yeah.
Yeah, I think we probably, I think we probably should do, yeah, cause I like to get the.
Was there, did, did you check with, uh, cause, um, did you check with more than those two dealers?
Oh, yes.
Those, those are the only two trucks that, that are either available or closed too?
Yes.
Gotcha.
That is, there's so many special options, two-way plow truck, that you just can't go on and find one. The one at HP is actually sitting there, going to be just a demo truck for, uh, Dable and Holman in Bangor.
In Bangor.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the hard part, was nobody had trucks. They, they're just not, not this time of year, they're normally done. You order those in the summer, so that they're ready for winter.
I, I think at this point then, what I'd like to do is I'll make a motion to, uh, go with what, uh, is recommended.
Up to a hundred?
Up to the, uh.
Four ninety?
Yeah, up to the hundred and ninety thousand. And of course, obviously a lot less if we can get it.
Yeah, obviously less if we can get it, I wanna lay eyes on the truck and make certain of everything, you know, but no rash decision will be made.
Right.
I, I wouldn't really expect one from you, considering the other stuff that you've gone through, no. So. We have a motion on the table for a, for a hundred and nine, up to expense from the, uh, capital reserve account up to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion, any questions, concerns? No? Okay, all those in favor?
I mean, it just makes sense anyway, cause we could have to replace, the truck was due to be replaced this summer anyway, so.
And there's no point in putting twenty-five thousand dollars into it. Into it.
No.
And more likely than not, we will not get that value back trading it in.
You probably, we think the max trade in value you could get off of that would be ten grand.
Ten grand, so right off the bat, we're losing fifteen thousand dollars. Ten grand, so right off the bat, we're losing fifteen thousand dollars.
Even if you did a rebuild, you, all you're doing is getting your money back, there's, there's no purpose in that.
And the rebuild for the, the ninety-day warranty that came with it wouldn't even take us to the winter.
Right.
Right.
Uh, you know, it just doesn't, the more we looked at it, the more just didn't, it wasn't worth it, it was, it was spending good money for a bad situation, so.
Absolutely.
I think this is definitely the better way to go, and because we do, you do have the funds available to you now to, to do it, it is definitely the better option. You know, we, we've looked at everything, in fact, one of the things we did discuss at length was the fact that there is absolutely no. Rental program for a plow truck or a dump truck, anywhere, anywhere, not, not anything, you can't. It, and there's no municipality you could call up and say, can we borrow a truck, it, it just doesn't work.
The other thing is, odds on our, that by next summer, that truck would probably be more expensive.
It very well could be, so, or, we'll work with them.
Usually go down.
Not till the end of the year.
Not till the end, the end of the year, yeah. So, that at least gives them a little wiggle room to see what he can negotiate on that.
We'll get it. See what we can get, that'll be good.
Okay.
So, at this point, I guess we're going to discuss other council business, and we will start with the, uh, short timer.
I just wanted to say that it's been my sincere pleasure to, to serve, I, you know, it's, it's been an honor to sit here for the last year with, with you fine folks. And Beverly and, and, uh, serve the, the town of Fairfield, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Well, it's been a pleasure having you on the board, and we thank, thank you for all of your input and thoughtful questions. That you have provided over the year. And not, not so much, not so much the last suggestion of more work for the chair, but other than that, yes. Uh, let's see, oh yes. While we're on that, I think I will take this opportunity.
Good idea.
To present a certificate of appreciation to councillor Jeffrey Newbauer and recognize you for your service for the town of Fairfield. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Been a pleasure sitting next to you, going over everything, it was very, very good. I would like to also take the thought of wishing, hoping everybody had a very merry Christmas and will have a happy, safe new year.
It's a very, a very happy and very safe new year, and according to rumors, this looks like there could be a storm coming in for New Year's. Gives everyone the opportunity to stay home, stay safe.
That's right. Make sure you stock up.
Yes. On firewood?
Yes.
Yes, okay, uh.
And gas for the snowblower, yeah.
And gas for the snowboard, yes. Anything else, John, you wanna?
No.
Aaron? You have nothing?
Nothing.
Are you, nothing?
Nothing.
Wow, okay. All right, and with that, I don't have anything at the moment. Have to say at the next meeting, we'll have something come up by then. So with that, the next regular meeting of the Fairfield Town Council will be held on Wednesday, January tenth, twenty eighteen. And at this time, the council will recess and sign all documents that require signatures of the council members. Uh, well.
Motion to recess?
Second.
Recess, we're recessed.